... tent, 2016. I would like to call the order of the regular meeting of the Moni Village Board. If you will please rise for the plunge of allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Horn.
Here.
Here.
Racing.
Present.
Gonzalez.
Gray.
Here.
And Holston.
Present.
Okay, we have open to the public agenda items. All of you if you have something pertaining to an item on the agenda, please come forward here and let me comment still during minutes. My name is Andrew. Okay. Nothing on the open to the public consent agenda. I want to take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Horn and Holston.
Discuss your name.
Yes, sir.
Under the mayor's report, no point.
Yes, sir.
My name is Steph Letya as a little vote says Ace Horn and Holston, Ace Gonzalez.
Yes, sir.
I was a maid.
You chose our items half one.
Each one.
We're not talking about the consent agenda.
Oh, yeah.
So you're talking about that we got a white tonight to copy the medicine last week.
Correct. So under the minutes.
I don't have a copy of that in front of me.
So we also correct it was a tie vote. So two votes A and B.
As per association of exercise, we can change it to approve.
I'll make that change.
Would the amendment as mentioned, trustee Horn, you've made motion, you okay with the amendment?
Yes.
Trustee Holston, you okay with the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Pop.
Yes.
Racing.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yeah.
Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Yes.
Let's record, do you have anything? Okay. I have nothing on the mayor's report. Let me just figure Batista.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. First item is in reference to our Will County governmental league, recent awarding of 1.1 million 124,000 in Surface Transportation Program grant funding. And according to the Illinois Department of Transportation IDAC Grant Guidelines, a local municipality receiving additional federal funding is required to administer a qualified business selection process for the Phase 3 engineering portion of the project. On July 15, 2016, a statement of interest in qualification for the Phase 3 construction engineering services were mailed to six area engineering firms, and two of those firms responded, DLZ Engineering and Engineering Corporation out of Chicago, and Farnsworth Group. A selection team consisting of the administrator, Public Works Superintendent, and Finance Director reviewed the qualifications of both firms. Based upon their qualifications, professional service displayed their knowledge of Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the construction project. Yet a time that would be saved and additional cost savings that would benefit the project. The selection team recommends that Farnsworth Group be approved to complete Phase 3 engineering services. We would ask for a motion to approve Farnsworth Engineering to continue to complete Phase 3 engineering services for the Egyptian Trail project. Before, in fact, I just had a couple more comments to this, just to make the board aware, we're in Phase 2 currently of the Egyptian Trail project. And as you know, Farnsworth Group is currently the engineering firm. And in order to move forward, we learned about additional grant money, but with that process, we have to go to bid again for this last portion of the project, and that's what this is all about, is making sure that everything is above board because of this additional grant funding. And this 1.124 additional funding is going to be also a portion of that help us with our realignment project as well, which will begin in 2017. But this, to move forward with this next, we would need the board's approval to pick one of these two engineering firms that have showed an interest in continuing this project.
Mr. Batista, if I may. Senator Crizell, what would be your recommendation for the Phase 3 selection? Horn, I just want to make sure what he's or they agree on. So with that being said.
Discussion decision, please. Mr. Administrator Batista, who else, who else was this sent out to?
This was sent out to a total of six. The two here, and then it was Robinson Engineering, it was A2 Comm Engineering, and it was, I don't have those, the other list in front of me, but going off the top of my head, it's Larson Engineering from Chicago. There's a group in Joliet as well. I'll have to.
Where's the man, A2 Comm?
They are also from Chicago. All of the other firms were from Chicago, and one was out of Joliet. And then Farnsworth has an office in Peoria, Bloomington, and Sherwood.
So I would entertain a motion to approve Farnsworth Group as part of the QBS for Phase 3 of the Egyptian Trail project.
Discussion?
Where is it?
Yes, sir. What was the actual price difference between the quotes?
In this portion, what is placed upon a village is to pick a qualified service. So there is not a dollar amount that's given. It's just to look at any firm that is interested in continuing the largest portion of Phase 3 for the project. So in looking at that other firm, there was only two that responded, as I said earlier, DLZ and Farnsworth. And both were very qualified. We did have a matrix as well to help us with scoring, to pick the teams, or pick to the selection. And in that, we, it was overwhelming that Farnsworth just had the knowledge of the current project, as well as, to remind the board, the water main project that we're doing with Aqua as well, played a large factor into that, and Farnsworth is also handling the water main portion for Aqua as well. So the time it would take for another engineering firm to come in at this portion of the project, we're two years into this now, to get caught up, to be brought right in, and then to be able to coordinate with another engineering firm, it just, it was going to add more time, more money to the project as well. So it just made dollar cents and logistics sense to continue with Farnsworth.
I don't doubt Horn's qualifications, I was just curious as to his financial.
There's not a dollar, it's not a bid per se of a dollar amount, it's just a qualification, a selection process.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Racing.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. The last item I have is just an update to board on our agreement that we're in negotiation with Will County. At this time, we're still negotiating costs and some conditions with bringing the eastern portion of Will County courts to here to Moni. So at this time, all I've got is that we're continuing a negotiation. They will bring it to their board in September, to the county board, and the county board will look at the contract at this point where we're at, and we'll wait to hear what the county board decides on, and then I'll bring it here to the board for your review and approval. That's all I have, thank you.
I know we had the committee of the whole directly before the village board meeting, but I will defer to the trustees if they have anything that's of nature of relevance for Public Works. Trustee Gray.
Just one thing tonight, the islands still is obviously under construction, the infrastructure as far as the wiring between Island and. Do we wire, sorry. We did have a water meeting break last night that the Public Works were out there for basically four o'clock morning till six o'clock in the morning. They did call Nikor, Nikor called them, you guys take care of it. It was right at Wilson, right in the middle of our construction, so that was all done in the house, so opposed to the overtime, there's not extra pay, then we had several companies come in. But again, they are doing infrastructure as far as the wiring right now. Again, if you don't know it, Sunset has been opened up to give us an easier in and out, which is over by the truck stops in Duncan, which is now open. I ever say a lot of people are happy about that. You can just head out west instead of trying to get through the construction that's very quicks working in the morning, so with that, I have nothing else tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, trustee Gonzalez.
Also one short thing to mention too, in the short weeks, Fall Festival will be at on us again, September 9 through 11. And of course, as always, we have a great band, great bands, a lot of the food vendors are coming back from last year. Family Entertainment this year, the Chris Clark's Mountain Bike Stunt Show. And as always, where the strength of this event is because of our volunteers, and dozens and dozens are needed for the weekend. So if anybody can call, please, the village hall, and ask to speak to Mary Jo to sign up for that for a couple hours, it'd be much appreciated.
Thank you. Next, with findings, trustee Horn.
Yes, we'll be having an audit there Monday, they will be here Monday through Friday next week. The company is Whip Clean, which was, there was another name, or they were, this is a newer company, because our previous auditing company was bought out. So if you're interested in that process, you're welcome to come up and report.
This is development, trustee Holston.
Two updates. Dollar General, the subject property must be re-subdivided to accommodate minor planned modifications. P&amp;Z will hear this issue next Wednesday, and a development agreement for the project is being drafted. Secondly, Project B, the one out on Richland Road, the client has indicated they will send out a press release on Friday, 8/12, announcing the Moni project.
Home Services, trustee Pop.
Yes, just a few items. Trustee Gray already mentioned it, Delphine Donics is the remodel, hoping to visit tonight. We continue to work on the outside cooler, occupancy will be given with a cooler meets expectation. Industrial trailer, parking lot in repair, the existing parking is approved and closed out on 8/9. Derry Meadows filled out Lot 8, plans a room review and waiting for building permits. Julie's Cafe built out, the building permit was picked up, rough plumbing inspections passed, and rough electrical pass, so this one's moving along also. We've had resale rental inspections to date of 64, building permits 17, a cost over $2,040, valued at $8,027. Code enforcement notices to date over 20, and all of them declined, and everybody.
And public safety with trustee Rizel. No more, Mr. Mayor. I know I forgot something earlier. A couple things pertaining to fire and our relationship with the fire department. Chief Nealon has been phenomenal to work with lately, I mean, as always, but has been brought to our attention, hearing you talk about Derry Meadows reminded me. There's been a request, apparently, when the development was young, there was a concern because of parking on the streets, it was interfering with the agility of the fire emergency response vehicles to get in that area. And Chief Nealon has asked us to consider a new parking consideration in parts of that area just because of the new vulnerability of fire protection. So I would ask Superintendent Crizell to make a recommendation, perhaps in the next meeting, for a possible amendment to our on-street parking specifically, as it would relate to a matter of public safety.
We still working on updating our website, and superintendent, I mean, administrator Batista is going to meet Friday to see us, to find out what is going on, our project over there. The villa had a fire close to now out of the city, and the code enforcement has been locating and tracking vacant properties with high grass and uninhabitable conditions. Now, like you say.
So, in that regard, I just would like to, the other thing pertaining to fire, it came to my attention recently pertaining to enforcement of open burning in the village, and I wasn't real clear, Larry, if the village was, had changed the fire, you know, like open burning of the refuge and stuff like that. I don't think it would change anything since the 1990s. I did talk to the fire chief, and apparently they have implemented some ordinances through the fire district, which is not technically part of the village, and a discussion came up about having some sort of an intergovernmental agreement for a collaborative ability to, if it's fire related, that is almost not contradictory to our municipal ordinance. They would have the latitude to deal with those things, or a sensitivity to their mayor's public safety, more so than. So I would simply ask, Larry, if you don't mind, to talk to the Fire Department's council, and see what the relevance would be in that, so that it's clarified, because there's some confusion about that. That would end the officials' report.
Attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I had on the agenda, but we talked about it at the committee meeting, there'll be no need for that public hearing. We're going to resolve it in a different manner with respect to the ordinance I'm going to draft pertaining to the sale of real estate, so there's no need for a motion, and I'll have the amended agenda, sorry, the amended ordinance for the board's review at the next board meeting.
Thank you, sir. I don't believe we have anything on old business, or anything on new business pertaining to the village. At this time, I would go to open to the public, non-agenda items, if you would, and we'll try to keep it under three minutes. And if you give your name and address, please, in the board.
Call it 25828, we report. I really think this is for DJ. With this project, they had the delay because of Nikor, does that increase the cost? That's all I need. Thank you.
No, we reached out to Nikor and Com Cast, who had not initially responded in a time of a half and a half, they have stepped up the game, and they are meeting our expectations. Thank you.
David Holston, 5326 West Main Street, Moni. Over the last four years, the trustees and the mayor have accomplished significant improvements. We want to continue to promote the values of the small community of hard-working, honest residents, a great place to live, visit, or work, a place of integrity, a place for families to call home. Our mayor has done many good things for this village. I have no doubt that he has tried his best to make improvements in areas where he saw a need. However, the citizens of Moni have a right to expect honesty, integrity, and a certain standard of behavior from their elected officials. The altercation at the ball field recently is at best an example of the mayor's lack of judgment. The mayor has not shown the integrity and leadership that we should expect from our elected officials. Whether the mayor is acquitted of the charges that have been filed against him or not, it is my opinion that the mayor should step down for the good of the village. No one can put their full efforts and attention to the business of the village with this hanging over their head. The mayor needs to take care of resolving these issues with the courts and step down. I want to make a specific issue, I'm not saying resign, I'm saying step down. We need to end the divisiveness that this ongoing scandal is causing the village. The trustees of Moni need to lead the way in standing up and saying enough is enough. I respectfully ask my fellow trustees to stand united and say, Mr. Mayor, you need to step down, resolve your personal issues, and allow the good work done in the last three years to be your legacy. At that point, of course, you could step up to the position if appropriate.
Anybody else?
Amanda Mitchell, 26226 Apple Blossom Lane. With all due respect, trustee Holston, I completely disagree. As a resident and raising a family here, the amount of work that my dad has put into this place, in this village, and working with all of you guys and all of the things that you have done has been significant, and I don't want to see that stopped because of an altercation that happened not related to the village, and not related to my dad as the mayor. I, I'm sorry that this is so, such a tragic thing, and that people are kind of dwelling on this a lot, but the amount of things that my father has done and has put his hard work into to make this place a family-friendly environment is the only reason that my family is even residing here, and I know that's true for a lot of other families as well. So as a resident and as your daughter, thank you.
Russell Renaud, 25955 Southeast Gate. I disagree with your opinion, sir, I'm sorry to say that. I feel that the mayor has done an outstanding job in creating a sense of community here that was, in my opinion, never here before, as you can tell, I'm raising a family here, I've been here six and a half years. The sense of community was never here before, and I feel it is here now. I feel there is infrastructure improvements, I feel there are events for families, I feel it's a great place to raise a family. I also feel that he made a mistake, and he admitted that he made a mistake, in his private life, does not have any reflection in his professional life. If it happened to me, where I had an altercation with somebody, that wouldn't affect my job. Why is it affecting his job? At the same time, he is innocent until proven guilty, let him have his time. Thank you.
Phil Gray, 25706, Hope, P O L K. I appreciate your response, but unfortunately, this is not the first incident that has happened in this village with our mayor slash trustee with the previous mayor. The comments of he wasn't a mayor in time, unfortunately, six of us, village officials, we're 24/7. Our projects that are going on is why we brought in the lady from Payless Heights with the mayor and the church to bring in these projects. I also do believe that for the last two months, myself personally have been listening to this, and listening to this, and listening to this, about what is going on, not even in this town, other towns as far north as where I work. And I do ask that, in respect to you, you take care of your family first and resign from your position. Thank you.
James Pop, 25652 Show Creek Drive. I just want to say that my initial response, that was in the newspaper, said the word in bold print, embarrassed, and it just keeps going on and on and on. And I think everything I've heard from people that I know, it is time, Mayor, for you to step aside and possibly come back if everything is thrown out, more or less. I don't wish you any ill, but I think it's the right thing to do for the village. The people are upset, many, many people. Why more don't come forward, I don't know, but I know what people say to me, and I think it would be the right thing to do.
Anybody else?
Wayne Hazer, 26634 Winfield. Social media has been at the crux of this. I wasn't at that ball field, but what happened, happened. We don't know what happened. As elected officials and Americans, whatever happened, until guilty, until proven, or sorry, innocent until proven guilty, he deserves his day in court. This was a private affair, it has nothing to do with the village. Jay has assembled a team. You think the team's going to work for anybody else? Think anybody else in this room could run this team? No. This is the best for the village. I've lived here 35 years, he's done more in three years than I've seen in 35. He made a mistake, but the courts decide.
Anybody else? I appreciate everybody's comments and your willingness to share them, thank you. Let me just go on record as stating that my personal affairs are my personal affairs. And while it seems that there's a number of people who would like to create distractions from the operations of the village, the people of Moni elected me to serve for four years. I am committed to continuing the great service that we have started here, and continuing to build upon that. I am not going to disrupt that, and I'm not going to sell the residents of our community who voted for me, I'm not going to sell them short. I am committed to continuing it, I am not distracted, if you want to be distracted, that's your choice, I'm not distracted. I am all in my resolve and committed to step up and do what needs to be done in order to continue the success of our community. I realize that there are people that don't like me, I'm sorry to hear that. But that does not change my commitment to our town, or to working with future individuals and others, how you feel about it. Am I going to make this a personal attack on individuals? There are ideas, we all have had things that we wish we hadn't done, and this is a personal matter, and let's get. And this is a personal matter, and let's get back to the business of our village and operating it the way we want to, which is for the success and the continued betterment of our community. So with that being said, thank you. And I believe we are going to go on to executive session, which we don't have anything for. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. The time is now 7:15.
I'll make that motion.
Orton and Gray? We're closed.
Trustee Gonzalez? Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Orton?
Yes.
Pop? Raisin?
Yes.